Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to our board meeting. And I welcome Mariette to lead us in our prayer.
Good evening, everyone, from far and wide and close. We gather this evening in the month of October, and we remember and pray with Mary, who was honored to be the mother of God. As we remember the Catholic Ed Week theme of nurturing hope, we look to Mary for guidance and wisdom. For despite the challenges of journeying with her son in ministry, and ultimately in death, Mary placed her trust and hope in the source of all love and all goodness, God. So we begin our prayer as we remember, and begin in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. In Mary's words, we pray. These words are directly taken from the Gospel of Luke, The Magnificat, which was an amazing phrases that Luke captured or felt that Mary would be expressing. And this was when she was expecting Jesus and had gone to visit her cousin. And her words, it's one of the most beautiful poems in the New Testament. So I invite your response as I read the leader part. "My soul proclaims the greatness of the Lord; my spirit rejoices in God, my Savior; for God has looked with favor on God's lowly servant."
For grace, help us to see God in all our movements of our life.
"From this day, all generations will call me blessed; the Almighty has done great things for me, and holy is God's name."
Hail Mary, full of grace, lead us to help others to see the good things God continues to do for the world.
"God has mercy on those who fear Him in every generation."
Hail Mary, full of grace, help us to be in awe of God's love and mercy for all people.
"God has shown the strength of God's arm; God has scattered the proud in their conceit; God has cast down the mighty from their thrones, and has lifted up the lowly." "God has filled the hungry with good things, and the rich He has sent away empty; God has come to the help of His servant Israel; for God has remembered His promise of mercy, the promise He made to our fathers, to Abraham and his children forever."
Hail Mary, full of grace, journey with us
and remind us of God's constant presence in our journey.
Mary, help us to be people of hope through the challenges of these days and beyond. Push us to keep compassion as our stance and service as our practice. We pray together. Hail Mary, full of grace.
The Lord is with thee.
Blessed are the women and blessed.
Blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now at the hour of our death.
Saint Isidore.
Pray for us.
Saint Louis.
Pray for us.
Saint John.
Pray for us.
Saint Thomas Aquinas.
Pray for us.
Saint John Paul II.
Pray for us.
Saint Marguerite Bourgeois.
Pray for us.
Amen. We close our prayer in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Saintest Spirit. Amen.
I'm really sorry, but Teresa, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. I'm not able to unmute you from where I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now, Trina?
Yes, that's perfect, Teresa.
Whoops. Okay, I think I've got it right now. Thank you, Mariette, for the prayer. That was beautiful. My God. Oh, boy. So, roll call, all trustees are present. And are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Hearing and seeing none, we'll continue with the consideration and approval of the agenda. May I please have the recommendation, Trina?
Let the agenda be approved as presented.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Mike. Any opposed? And seeing none, that carries. Confirmation of the minutes. Recommendation is found on page one. Trina, please.
That the minutes of the regular board meeting of the Canora Catholic District School Board of September 15, 2020, be approved as circulated.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Frank. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on down to number eight, Delegations and Presentations. 8.1, our 2020 to 2025 multi-year strategic plan. Derek, please. And that starts on page eight in the board books.
And Derek, just so, Derek, you're muted right now. You just have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm live.
Yep.
All right, and can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I, not that you've forgotten because you were quite involved as a board of trustees in the development of this plan. And I'm just going to do a bit of a muting here. All right. Thank you. Okay, so just start that again. And yeah, as I said, I believe our, I'm very proud of our strategic plan for the involvement of the whole community, particularly our students, in developing this. And I believe the strategic plan really shows us a way out of what I'd characterize as a COVID funk the world is in. And it's not that we, we don't, it's not that we shouldn't pay attention to COVID because we should, but we shouldn't make it the main thing. The main thing is that we need to continue growing. We need to continue investing, and we need to continue engaging. And that's all to the benefit of our students for the glory of God. So as you know, the three components are as important as ever, perhaps more so now. And you remember the growing component, that's from Luke's Gospel, where it grew and became a tree. And you know the many analogies. We want our students to grow to their greatest potential and benefit our community, and again, contribute to the glory of God in doing that. We live our Catholic faith by growing student potential, in fact. That's what our purpose is. Seeking innovative programs and experiences to encourage each person, so students, but certainly staff and all community members, families, each other. Creating learning opportunities that allow students to find success, sparking that curiosity, allowing students to explore and innovate, and to find their voice, to encourage their originality. Being inclusive and collaborative, and committing to a common sense of values, to identify what is true for all of us. Needing improving mental health, healthy minds, bodies, and spirits. The investing, the, again, from the Gospel of Luke, building a house, digging deeply, and laying the foundation on rock. Talking about Peter as the rock of the church. Of course, God is always our rock. Living our Catholic faith by investing in our future. Nurturing shared belief in the importance of ongoing learning for all. Recognizing and cultivating servant leadership, shepherd leadership, in that great analogy of Jesus as our shepherd. Building a culture of trust. And part of that is through COVID. We want people to trust that schools are a safe place to be because the health unit and all partners have worked very hard to make it so. Developing leadership strengths of all, promoting self, environmental, and community stewardship. And engaging, that would, we can't do this alone. We certainly can't do it without God, and we rely on God's grace and mercy so that everything we do turns out okay. And when we mess up, we always have God's grace to fall upon. But we always, we also have each other, as imperfect as we are, to lean on. And so we encourage each other, and we build each other up, and we serve one another. And so Paul's first letter to the Thessalonians certainly speaks to that so poignantly. We live our Catholic faith by engaging our students in our communities. That's what we're here for. And we want to energize them. We want to light them on fire with the, with the fire of the Holy Spirit. We encourage students to name and claim their strengths and their paths. And there are many paths, and we have to honor those paths. And each path is valid and is good in itself. We foster partnerships that extend beyond the walls of our schools. We're blessed with an incredible community. Red Lake, Bommer Town, Ear Falls, Soonarows, here in Kiwate, Canora, Norman, all the areas in between. We have incredible strength and incredible support from our community. And so that was just a brief reminder of what we're all about, how our strategic plan really brings alive the Catholic graduate expectations, how it continues from our focus on faith from our previous strategic plan, and how it really lives out some of the secular goals like that are expressed in the, in the strategic, the development goals that the UN sets out that are very much in line with what we need to be doing, particularly as good stewards of the earth. So, Madam Chair, that's my presentation. I'd be pleased to take any further questions, but we will embark on a renewal of our plan because it was a little bit, you know, upended by the initial onset of COVID. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Derek on this?
I just have a moment. It is so simple, but it is so powerful.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Derek. So 8.2, our pivot plan.
Madam Chair, if I could just interrupt for a moment.
And that's found starting on page 21.
Madam Chair, if I could just interrupt for a moment. I believe Director Hame had a video that he wished to share about the multi-year strategic plan. And Director Hame, you're on mute.
My apologies. I booted that one. Thank you, Trina, for reminding us of that. So I've relinquished control, so Trina, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
All right. Can everybody see a wonderful forest and an educator and a student with a tree? Okay, I'm gonna press play.
Our new multi-year strategic plan is the result of unprecedented outreach and involvement from our community. We're happy to see our students, families, and stakeholders driving our future. Hi, my name's Derek Hame. I'm the Director of Education of the Canora Catholic District School Board. We are extremely excited to launch our 2020 to 2025 multi-year strategic plan.
Growing. It grew and became a tree. Luke, Chapter 13, verse 19.
I have asked every staff member to be able to articulate the seeds they are planting, and will continue to plant that will grow into something big that is pleasing to our Creator.
Investing. Build a house. Dig deeply and lay the foundation on rock. Luke, Chapter 6, verse 48.
I have asked every staff member to identify the big rocks on which their vocation is built on. For me, it is the Catholic graduate expectations, and particularly the one about being discerning believers.
Engaging. Therefore encourage one another and build up each other as indeed you are doing. First Letter to the Thessalonians, Chapter 5, verse 11.
I have asked every staff member to describe how they are encouraging everyone around them, especially our students, to build each other up. For me, it is about engaging all partners to benefit all students. It truly takes an entire village to raise a child. Canora Catholic.
Big, small, bright future.
Yeah, sweet.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Trina. Okay, sorry. 8.2, our pivot plan, which starts on page 21. Derek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna share my screen again. And this time, I share my desktop, I believe. Can everybody see the, the main page of our website?
Yes.
Just do a quick thing here. Okay, so we're going to go on a little journey together. So our website, as you know, has a lot of information. Sometimes it's a little hard to navigate. Let me give you a little tip if you're, if you don't know where to go. You'll see the search function. So I'm gonna show you two ways to get to our pivot plan. So the search function works really well. So you know it's called pivot plan. So if you just put in pivot and hit the magnifying glass, then, oh, there we go. We get to our pivot plan, and I click it. And then boom, the pivot plan's there, okay? So if you forget the other way I'm gonna go, that's always a way. But the only caveat to that one is you need to know what things are called, and we try to label them logically. So I'm going to go back now. And this is again our main page. And the pivot plan is part of COVID-19, our safety updates. And so I'm going to want to read more. And then you can see our return to school plan, which we did talk about and which we're also very proud of. But you can see our pivot plan is here too. And so this leads us into our pivot plan. And I'm not going to go over the whole plan, but I will click on it to show everyone and encourage everyone. Any member of the public can take a look at our pivot plan. And I'm very proud because, again, our pivot plan was a result of the work of a lot of people. And I know trustees, you know, you were quite involved. We had students that were quite involved. And in fact, I'm still sorting through all the data that we got from several hundred students who commented on their experience of virtual learning between March and June, and also their experience of coming back to school since September. And I'll be able to bring some of those results to you as a board of trustees and to the public after I sift through the many excellent comments that I've recently received from students. Some of those comments have helped modify this living plan. And so you can see our mission, vision, and values are first and foremost getting ready for a rapid transition. The Ministry of Education has said that he wants boards to make a 24-hour transition if we have to move from face to face to solely at-home learning. We've already had a few classrooms a few weeks ago that had to switch to at-home learning. And I commend the particular teachers, the EAs, and all of the others, ECEs, principals, vice principals, all those involved, because they did make a very quick switch. If we have to go with an entire system, a few more moving parts. But following this plan and through the excellent efforts and preparation of everybody, I believe we can do it pretty close in 24 hours. There may be some pickup of materials that'll take a little longer, but we can certainly get things rolling. I did highlight a couple of additions we had, and they continue to be made. I won't go to them. I'm just flipping through, as you can see, the table of contents. But Marney Buffett and some others have done some further work even since we spoke last about the considerations we have to make for screen time, particularly for our youngest learners. So that has been updated even since I talked to you last. And so there's some additional information because not all screen time is created equal. And I think the example I gave last time is if Grandma is in another part of the country and is communicating with the children via FaceTime or another medium, that has incredible benefits, as we could well imagine. And so the same detriment that may be attributed to a violent video game, of course, wouldn't apply to Grandma's talk, the loving talk with, with children. Likewise, when our teachers are using this medium for instruction, they choose the content with care. So there's incredible benefit to the students. Our, our teachers, EAs, educational assistants in particular, are very discerning in how they implement online learning. So our staff at St. Isidore, or our classes, if they do happen to be closed, breaks are included, and asynchronous and synchronous work is interspersed to reduce some of the harmful effects and enhance some of the beneficial effects. So we continue, our plan continues to evolve through feedback we receive, and it will continue to do. But I'm very proud of this plan because I'm proud of the people who developed it. And I know that it will serve us well should we have to reengage in a solely virtual environment going forward. So, Madam Chair, that is my presentation on the, on the pivot plan, as we call it. And please take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Frank, you have a question?
A comment first, Madam Chair. Thank you. Derek, I just want to commend you and all the staff that were involved in the preparation of that plan because it's quite a lot of work, as we can all tell. But in terms of, you know, and I appreciate the, the work that goes into meeting the ministry's expectations for a 24-hour turnaround, should, should it be required. But how does that necessarily address the ability of our families to make a 24-hour turnaround? People are working. I hate to think of what might precipitate the need for a 24-hour turnaround, but with parents still working and whatnot, I'm not sure that families would be prepared for a, or be able to make a 24-hour turnaround. So how is that addressed?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, certainly, our educators work with families. And, sorry, just got a bit of an echo. They work with families, and teachers will use their professional judgment, the advice of the parents, and the voice of the student to tailor what is right for that family at any given time. So I think, I think your point is very well taken, that a 24-turnaround might not be realistic in every household. So even if as a system we can do that, we have to work with the families. And so the families may get some paperwork to start for students to work on. They may get some what's known as asynchronous activities, work the teacher can give that the student can work on without maybe having to set up the computer right away. Teacher can call, email. So we will, teachers will, as they did from March to June, work with families to tailor these programs to work best in the households. Because when we talk about universal design for learning, we normally have control of the physical environment because it's a classroom in our schools. When it shifts to at-home learning, universal design for learning involves a lot more partners and a lot more contacts. And so we have to be aware of that reality. So thank you, trustee Frank. Your, your point is very well taken. And our teachers, again, will continue to work with families to meet the needs and to tailor the best educational programming possible within the confines of one's home.
Okay. Any other questions for Derek? Ann?
Just a comment to Derek. Just from a personal experience, it was probably mid-week before the, my, my particular family was ready to engage just in our short, one week off that we had there where we had to pivot. So I agree with Frank.
Okay, yeah, it was tough. And just childcare and working when you pivot, yeah. Okay, any other questions? No? Well, let's hope we can keep all our students in class. Okay. We will move down to 8.3, Enhanced Safety Protocol Report, from students. And I have Julia and Ricky. I believe Ricky's here too, to offer some help. Great, there we go. Okay, ladies.
Hi.
Hello.
We just have a very short video that we've created to show everyone what the new health and safety measures are in our schools through the eyes of the students so you can understand everyone's perspective. You have the video, Ricky?
I can bring it up right now, Julia. Standby.
Okay, perfect.
Do you guys see six icons on your screen?
Yes, we do, Trina.
Okay, I'm gonna press play.
They haven't been that difficult to follow. It hasn't been too much of a change aside from wearing masks and just sort of keeping to yourself.
All cohorts have a different door to enter and exit the school. We do this to limit cross-contaminating our friends.
We come into the school, we have hand-free sanitizing stations. Use our feet to make it easier to enter quickly and safely.
It keeps things organized instead of random whatever, and keeps it organized and neat. So that way, people will be spaced out instead of, you know, clustered.
It's not that bad. It switches every day. I think it's a good idea.
There's like, there's like a playground area and then with a swing and basketball court. Yeah, I think, I think it's good.
Each class has been given their own outside equipment to play with. We take out the same equipment and sanitize it when we bring it back in.
It can be hard at times, but at least we can take our mask off outside if we're two meters apart or more. But in the school, we do have to wear our mask and stay two meters apart. It's cool to see that all the different designs on everyone's masks. I got some comfortable ones, but gym, they can get sweaty, yeah.
I think it's pretty smart because then we know that there's only three people out in the bathroom at a time. So if there's already three people in the bathroom, then if another person comes and they know that there's three people in the bathroom, then they can wait, and then when somebody goes out, they can switch out their magnets.
I think the health and safety measures at our school have proven very effective in keeping both the staff
in keeping both the staff and students here safe, as each student is only exposed to a certain amount of other students in their cohort. And the hallways have been relatively clear, so it's easy to navigate. And with hand sanitizer available in every room and at every entrance, it's really easy for us to follow the instructions and keep everyone safe.
We want to be here, so we will all do our part.
Awesome.
Yeah, we really wanted to show everyone what it's like in our schools, since we can't have visitors or family members coming in all the time. And we wanted to highlight all the new precautions being taken through the perspective of the students, so you can understand what a day in the life is, and to show how students feel about wearing their masks and social distancing and using hand sanitizer 24/7. We also wanted to illustrate the innovative ways that schools have been adapting to keep students safe, like the magnets on the walls outside of the bathrooms to keep numbers down, so there isn't a big party in there.
Yeah, we're also gonna be using the video as part of National Student Safety Week, which is this week. We're gonna be launching the video for the public tomorrow. And it just gives trustees, community members, families, since they can't visit the schools right now, it gives them kind of a glimpse into what schools look like for their students.
Great, thank you. That, yeah, that was very helpful, to be able to see inside the school. And you're right, we can't go in any of the schools, so that does help. Any of the trustees have any questions for Julia or Ricky right now? Comment?
Yeah, I just want to commend, thank you for that, just want to commend the students in the video there, for seemingly making an easy adaptation to the new reality. Just to paraphrase, it's not that big a deal, we're doing what we need to do. So I just commend you all for that. You're troopers, you're saints.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Okay, any other comments or questions? No? Okay. So Julia, I will let you go ahead with your student trustee report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Max was unable to attend tonight, so it's just me. Good evening, trustees, Director of Education, Superintendent, Coordinators, and System Leaders. As the fall colors quickly come and go, so does the first quadmaster. With exams in a short three weeks, students have already started preparing. On September 29th and 30th, students participated in the Terry Fox Run. The event took place over the two days, so that classes could go at different times to stay within their cohorts without cross-contamination. It was also a great opportunity for students to get outside, take off their masks, get some fresh air, and exercise. With all of the struggles that have been presented in all of our lives, we still continue to be grateful for the ups and the downs. As a school, we could not gather together to celebrate Thanksgiving, but we could virtually. Although this past year has not gone as planned, we are thankful for the extra time we got to spend with our families, for the health workers that continue to work overtime to protect us, and the staff at KCDSB who have helped the students thrive through this challenging time. We are also thankful for God's plan, although it may not seem clear, we know we will make it through. On October 13th, the video for the 2019-2020 Stellar Awards was released. Staff came up with very unique ways of presenting the awards to the students. The awards were announced over the intercom, and the students were called to the music room. They were handed the awards in ways that corresponded with what award they got and why they got it. The link for the video was emailed to students and their families, so award winners could celebrate at home. Two days later, on October 15th, the video was sent out for the athletic awards. The coaches took videos explaining their seasons and how proud they were of each athlete. Many sports were cut short because of the school closure, but the games and practices that did happen did make a difference. We would like to say congratulations to all the award winners. We know that every coach, parent, and teacher is very proud of your accomplishments. Although we are only two short months into school, the potential grads of St. Thomas-Aquinas High School have been doing plenty of research on their futures. Ms. Herkin has set up a Google Classroom to share all necessary information. There is a post-secondary information video posted to give students a look at what the rest of the year would look like, with deadlines and events to come. Students will be applying to colleges and universities in November, and grad photos will be in December. Students are very nervous but also excited to see what the future has in store. The younger students have been spending time getting the best out of the outside environment. During their breaks, students are encouraged to take off their masks and go outside and social distance. However, with the nice weather slowly deteriorating, students dread the cold, and that comes along with living in northwestern Ontario. Now more than ever, students look to use up every second of fresh air possible. While the school year hasn't been as jam-packed with activities, students continue to be thankful that they are able to see their friends and socialize in a safe environment.
Thank you, Julia. I was able to see the videos that were done for the Stellers in Sports, that was a great job done. And who'd have thought exams are already happening? Your report is well done, though. Questions from any of the trustees? No?
I watched as well, both videos as well, and I just made one comment as I was watching, that there should have been an award, a creativity award, for the way that the awards were presented. That was quite unique.
Pretty cool. Yeah. It was awesome.
Okay, thank you so much, Julia. Okay, we will move on our agenda. So, number 9.1, Approval of the Minutes. May I have the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the report of the Policy Governance Committee meeting of October 6, 2020 be approved as circulated.
Moved by, and seconded by Vaughn. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. 9.2, Policy. May I have 9.2.1, the recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board approve the review of Policy Number One, District Mission, Vision, and Values, with no revisions at this time.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by Michael. Any opposed? In that case. And 9.2.2, Policy Number Six, The Role of the Trustee. May I have that recommendation, please, Trina?
That the board approve the revisions to Policy Number Six, Role of the Trustee, effective immediately.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jeff. And any opposed? And that carries. Okay. Now we will move down to 9.6, Program. 9.6.1, The 2020-2021 Primary Class Size Report. Allison Smith. Hello, Allison.
Hello. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So for this evening, for the primary class size report, I do just have a brief report to share with you. Annually, we do share the primary class size report to ensure that we are compliant with the class size legislation. The legislation requires 90% of primary classes to be at or below 20 students, 100% of classes to be below 23. This does not include the kindergarten classes, which is an average, a worldwide average of 26 students, as well as the grade three, four split classes must be at or below 23 students. So as of October 14th, we do have eight kindergarten classes, and the class size average for our kindergarten classes is at 17. All of our primary class sizes, grades one to three are below 20. And just to report that the average class size between grade one to three is at, is 15. And our grade three, four classes do have an average of 20. The three, four split at St. Isidore, the virtual elementary school, is at 24. So currently, there are no budgetary or financial constraints or considerations, and there will be no further communication, as we don't formally report the primary class size issue to the ministry, so this is just an information sharing report for you. So that's all I have for primary class size, if there's any further questions.
Thank you, Allison. Frank has a question.
Just in regards to the one class, the three, four split at St. Isidore, do any individual class must be 23 or fewer?
And, so the three, four class should be 23, correct? So that one is over by one.
So are there any implications of that one class being one student over the maximum?
No, we look at the other classes as well, and there is a three, four kind of average of 20.
Okay.
Great.
Yep, just that one that stood out as being one over, and just wanted to make sure there's no implications of that. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
9.6.2, 2020 Enrollment Report. Please, Allison.
Yes, okay, so this is, information I'll be going off is on page 75 of your board book. And at the top, I've listed our projected enrollment, and this was the enrollment that we did in the spring. Well, I guess it would have been early summer, as we did pass our budget estimates early July. And the total headcount for our projected enrollment was 1,304. I do have the individual schools listed there, and you'll see I did include St. Isidore for elementary and secondary, and we did not have any projected enrollment for that school, because at that time, that school did not officially exist. So we had projected enrollments for St. John at 123, St. Louis 117, SMB 271, PJP 225, and St. Thomas-Aquinas Elementary, 212, and Secondary 356. So that's where the total of 1304 is. And then we look at our enrollment as of October 14th. You'll notice the total headcount is very equivalent to what we projected, the headcount is 1,309. You will see decreases in the elementary schools, but then you'll see that it is offset by the families who have opted in for the virtual school at St. Isidore. So even though they may have, they're not being reported at the physical location, the most of the families are reported in the enrollment for St. Isidore Elementary, which is K to 8, or the secondary, which is grade nine to 12. So if we look at our total projections, I just summarized it at the bottom for elementary and secondary as a whole. Projected elementary was 948, and our total elementary as of October 14th was 960. Total secondary projection was 356, and the total secondary as of October 14th was 349. So that just gives a bit of a further breakdown. Are there any questions related to the enrollment report?
Trustees?
I do, I'm not sure if it's to Allison or to Derek, just in regards to virtual for St. Isidore, whether we have a sense on how families feel about after being two, almost two months in, the ability to handle, I guess, a virtual learning environment, and whether we can project that those numbers will go up or down or stay the same? Do we have a sense of that? Are we getting any feedback from families as to how they feel the success is going or not going for their students, for their children?
I can take that, Madam Chair, if that's okay.
Okay.
So certainly, we've received some very positive feedback with, from families whose children are participating. I do have a concern, though, because absenteeism rates are very high at St. Isidore. For example, on a given day, approximately 50% of our secondary students are not in attendance. We've been working on that, we're working with an attendance expert, we're working with our very own attendance counselor at the board. Our staff are actively reaching out to families whose students aren't participating regularly, and we continue to work on that. So in summary, Trustee Frank, I'll answer your question in saying those who are participating have very positive comments. As our staff, as we've said, strive to make it as close to the face-to-face experience as is possible, knowing we can't quite get there, because face-to-face is the ultimate learning environment. But families have very valid reasons why they've chosen at-home learning, and so we bend over backwards, communicate with them to try to make it work. But I do, and we will continue to work with those students who, for whatever reason, aren't attending St. Isidore right now.
And in regards to the ones that aren't attending and missing, say, 50% of the time, do we have a sense that they're not attending online because they're not able to cope, or do we have a sense of why, why they're absent?
We're trying to get a handle on that as we communicate and try to get to the bottom of what the concern is. I, some of these students find online learning very difficult, and so it exacerbates some of the difficulties they may already experience around schooling. So again, through the creativity of our educators, our attendance counselors, principals, vice principals, for certain, we're trying to find that way to make the online learning more appealing and more successful for those students who are reluctant to take part at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, you're on mute right now?
Okay, so that is quite alarming, to have that many absent at high school with quadmasters there doing exams, so hopefully the students will come attend more, and we can make this work this year. Okay. Any other questions? No? 9.6.3, September Special Education Advisory Committee Report. Anne.
Yeah. So this is the meeting.
Oh, Anne. Is she on? You're muted. No, on the, on the screen. On the screen, the mouse, unmute yourself. See that?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay, Anne. Sorry.
This is a report from the CAF meeting of September 18th. Now, there are a couple of appendices with these minutes that should be posted with the minutes on the school website, just to bring that to your attention. Because one of the appendix is called the DESNA tables. So that's the Differentiated Special Education Needs Amount, and it is pages of technical details. But these amounts are for three of school years, 1819, 1920, and 2020 to 2021. So they reflect the special education funding changes. There are also changes to the special education grant funding for 2020 to 2021, that is $7 billion.
Madam Chair, I don't know what happened, but we are not hearing Anne Sweeney anymore.
No, I just took a pause.
Okay.
And then Derek did provide a report to the SEAC members on the school updates describing a smooth startup. And he also explained that in the event that the ministry decides to go back to online learning, the board is developing a very detailed pivot plan so we can move quickly, and we are aware of that by now. There was a report about our virtual schools, re-special education. So there are two learning resource teachers with our virtual school, and the vice principals have been contacting parents to assess how IEPs can work from home. And they are also in communication with parents to see how our exceptional students are coping and what supports are required. The educational assistants and the learning resource teachers are working out of our schools using technology to reach out to, to our students. From our, our partners, our, the agency reports, Firefly did report that they are seeing all of their clients now, whether it be virtually or face-to-face. And they have recently hired a Director of Child and Youth Development Services and a Director of Child and Youth Mental Health. And diagnostic services are proceeding in a hybrid model of in-person and virtual formats. From the Canora Association for Community Living, Angela Holmstrom said that they are updating their service delivery model to include in-person visits at their office as well as home visits that take place outdoors. And they are working towards indoor visits as the weather changes. They are also continuing to work with school teams for case conference and supports as needed. And they are working with Community Living Ontario to provide an education series to parents on inclusive education. In the Coordinator's Report, Andrea Batters spoke about the Ministry Transition Program. So there were transition liaison days prior to school starting and during the return for school period for our children with high special education needs and/or for children with mental health concerns, and of course, for their families. And this, this transition period allowed both children and families to connect with educators. And the funding for the transition program did continue until September the 30th. Dallas Novelli is our curriculum coordinator and is continuing to work with school teams to support readers who are hard to reach. Andrea also spoke about the Northern Support Initiative funding. This is continuing into its third year, and this program provides dollars targeting Northern Ontario school boards. And these dollars are aimed to develop greater availability and responsiveness in the support of students with special education needs in our, our region. And also, the Northern Ontario Education Leaders, or NOEL, did provide a draft budget to address a prioritized needs for 2020, 2021, identifying the areas of challenge and the, and some proposed solutions and interventions. And that the full NOEL report is also included as an appendix with this, with these minutes. And that is my report for September.
Thank you, Trustee Anne. Any questions from any of the trustees? No? Thank you for your very thorough report, once again. We will move now to nine point eight, other. And nine point eight one and nine point eight two are both reports that I will be speaking to. So the first one is the Oxta 90th Anniversary Speaker Series. So Oxta, which is the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association, has launched a speaker series for our 90th anniversary. And the first presentation was by author and historian Dr. Mark McGowan. It was delivered on September 30th and was entitled "Isolated but Not Alone: Reflections on Catholic Education and in the Context of COVID-19." This engaging presentation remind us, reminded us that many of the challenges we face today as a Catholic school system and as a province, we have in many ways faced before when the cholera and typhoid epidemics of the early and mid 1800s swept through what was then Upper and Lower Canada and closed schools everywhere. Our Catholic religious orders and leaders, especially Bishop Michael Power, who Dr. McGowan described as the architect of the multiple delivery of Catholic education. So that was in 1841, he said that. That is pretty interesting that he did this. He stepped in to help communities in the absence of public social safety nets and truly helped to establish the incredible foundation Catholic school boards build upon today. This was a very informative and timely presentation. It has been recorded, so if you didn't get a chance to see it, it's, it's amazing, the history, and you, you look at pictures that of people with masks, like 100, more than 100 years ago, and just the postings of, you know, they were doing social distancing and some of the riots and the anti-maskers. It's like, we haven't come very far. I encourage you all to watch it if you haven't had a chance yet. And now the second.
Just a comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank, thank you for attending. I was registered as well. I just wasn't able to make it that evening. I was, been under the weather. But just as a follow-up to that, I think I may have communicated already to the board that Sharon McMillan is looking for input into additional parts of that, of that series. It's still under development, so if there are any thoughts as to what one might want to see as a trustee as part of that speaker series, she's open to suggestions. So individually, if you want to communicate anything to Sharon, you can do so through her to OCSDA.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Okay, so on October 2nd, Oxta held our Fall Northwest Regional Meeting virtually. This was attended by many trustees and directors of our four Northwestern Ontario Catholic Boards. There's Thunder Bay Catholic, Northwest Catholic, Superior North Catholic, and Canora Catholic, and also the Oxta staff. Our President Patrick Daly opened our meeting with a prayer and then did the president's report on the many things Oxta is doing at a provincial level. I, I'd like to also mention that he did share that Trustee Frank Bastoni, the director for Northwest, is a very strong advocate for the Northwest at all Oxta meetings. So I'd like to thank Frank for that. Next, our executive director, Nick Malinetti, did a quick labor update and a school startup process. And then Anne O'Brien, who is the Director of Catholic Education for Oxta, provided us with this year's Catholic Education Week theme, which is nurturing hope. So Anne referenced some of these things, the recognition of the special year of the Dato Si announced by Pope Francis on May 24th, the 50th anniversary of his, of his, no, fifth, sorry, anniversary of his papal encyclical on caring for our common home. The importance of hope in the face of the ongoing reality of the COVID-19 pandemic. The challenges to personal and spiritual wellbeing posed by the uncertainty and physical isolation of the current global crisis. The truth and reconciliation commissions recognizing the relevance of Indigenous culture and spirituality the, to the spirit of La Dato Si. Also, the call of trustees to inspire hope in their community. And one thing we do at the Northwest Catholic meetings is have a roundtable and discussion as to our challenges. So each board presented their challenges, and we always seem to see a lot of common things that are issues for us, like teacher shortages, connectivity, bus driver shortages, and absenteeism. Those are things that were really common amongst the four boards. We also got to share a, one experience that was a cause for hope and gratitude in this time. I had many. I was so lucky. Trina has this great, some good news stories. So we, or one of them was, is our great partnership with the Northwestern Health Unit that we have right now, our launching of St. Isador School, and also our partnership with the Youth Hub and many more. And I think that's it. If anyone else would like to add, that would, anything? Good?
I think you covered it all, Madam Chair.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, so that brings us to Committee of the Hall. The recommendation, please, Trina.
That the board accept the report of the Committee of the Hall and all recommendations contained therein.
Moved by Frank Bastoni, seconded by Mike Favreau. Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Next are future meetings. You can see them, the school council meetings as well. I believe most school council meetings are, are virtual at this time. And trustee professional development as well is on there, which is virtual as well. And that brings us to number 16, which is adjournment, and the recommendation, please, Trina.
That the meeting adjourned at 8:02 PM.
Moved by Paul Landry, seconded by Vaughn.
His hand was up before you called the motion.
I know. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Teresa? Madam Chair, all in favor?
All in favor?
Everyone is, all in favor? Yeah.
Good night, Jeff. Good night, Vaughn.
Good night, Jeff.
Good night, Jeff. Good night, Vaughn.
Good night, guys. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Hey, witch.